I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can start the roll call please.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair, Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Mr. De Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Seber.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
We do, we have a personnel item, that's ratification of personnel to the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Next up is what you're all here for, I assume, our superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Good evening, Mr. Williams, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, members of the school board, Dr. McWhirr. I am delighted to be here this evening to share with you the superintendent's spotlights. First up, we have Madeline Saputro, Osborne High School, 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Madeline has been named a commended student in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as an initial screen of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year. Commended students are named on the basis of a nationally applied selection index score. Although commended students do not continue in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, some of these students do become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. Madeline is an excellent student. Her current GPA is 4.44 and she attends the Governor's School at Innovation Park. She plans to study pre-medic college and has applied to George Mason University, Harvard University, Johns Hopkins University, University of Rochester, Virginia Commonwealth University, Virginia Tech, and the University of Virginia. We commend Madeline on her achievement. Congratulations.
February 5th through 9th, 2018 was designated as National School Counselor Appreciation Week to highlight the tremendous impact that school counselors have in helping students achieve success in school and develop vocational and post-secondary plans. School counselors are recognized for the many services they provide to students, teachers, parents, and administrators. Our school counselors work diligently to help students excel and their hard work is essential to the success of our schools. They play a vital role in the educational process of all students in the Commonwealth. Many of our school counselors are here tonight and we would like to recognize them for the work that they do daily. As I call your names, please come forward. Robin Campbell, Osborne High School. Kari Chambers, Metz Middle School. Amber Duchess, Baldwin Intermediate School and Mayfield Intermediate School. Emily George at Dean, Hayden, and Weems Elementary Schools. Heather Hardy, Baldwin Intermediate School, Mayfield Intermediate School. Sylvia Heaton, Osborne High School. Taylor Jewett, Round Elementary School. Kara Mitchell, Weems Elementary School. Sarah Myers, Hayden Elementary School. Carmen Perez, Metz Middle School. Heather Rainey, Baldwin Elementary School. Susan Smith, Jenny Dean Elementary School. Maxine Taylor, Baldwin, Round, and Weems Elementary Schools. Elizabeth Thomason, Baldwin Intermediate and Mayfield Intermediate School. Tim Tibbs, Metz Middle School. And all from Osborne, Brian Maiden, Sam Morton, and Molly Whittington. And Shaima Batista from Central Office. Get a picture. Nice and close. Nice and close. There we go. Okay, ready. One, two, three, and one more, just for fun. Thank you so much, counselors, for all that you do. Up next, we have our Apple and Pear Awards. The school board continues to recognize the outstanding contributions made by instructional and support employees through the Apple and Pear Award Program. The Apple Award is given to instructional or licensed personnel and the Pear Award is given to support personnel. We have a couple of awardees who have some conflicts tonight and are unable to be here, but I am going to read their names so that they get their proper recognition. First, from Baldwin Elementary School is Charity Sorji. She's a second grade teacher. From Jenny Dean, we have Terry Golei. Ms. Golei is a pre-K teacher at Jenny Dean and was nominated for the Apple Award because she is always willing to jump in and help. She is flexible and helpful to other teachers when they need it. She helped to set up for the winter concert even though it wasn't even her grade level. She loves what she does and it shows in the passion and time she takes with her students. Ms. Golei is always available to help answer any questions and is a great mentor. Congratulations, Ms. Golei. Our next attendee is unable to be here, but we'd like to recognize Melissa Jones from Hayden Elementary School as their Apple Award winner. Round Elementary School, Tina Bachelor. Tina Bachelor is a third grade teacher and continually looks for better ways to help her students succeed and comes up with many instructionally sound and creative ideas. She has a special talent for planning and implementing cross-curricular activities so her students can see that learning a subject like science is dependent upon other areas like reading, writing, and math. Ms. Bachelor is a mentor to new teachers and in that role, she takes time to meet with her mentees, share ideas, and provide positive guidance wherever needed. She cares deeply about the success of her students and partners with her families to ensure everyone is successful. Congratulations, Ms. Bachelor. Weems Elementary School, Carrie McDaniel. Carrie McDaniel is in her third year of teaching in the blended pre-K class at Weems. She uses innovative methods to teach these young learners while also keeping it fun. She is extremely hardworking, dependable, and a great team leader not only at Weems but for the division program as well. She is always willing to help and share her time and expertise with others. Ms. McDaniel loves what she does and it's apparent in the homeschool connections she makes each and every day with all of her families. Congratulations, Ms. McDaniel. I don't think she's here, but Baldwin Intermediate School, Kim Blazey. Congratulations to Ms. Blazey. Mayfield Intermediate School, Ashley Lubold. Ashley Lubold is an exemplary teacher who creates a sense of community in her art classes and establishes connections with students and colleagues alike. She consistently demonstrates respect for students and staff, setting the standard as an enthusiastic and caring teacher. Ms. Lubold has high expectations for all students and is flexible when adapting lessons to meet the needs of those students. Mayfield Intermediate reaps the benefits of her dedication as she puts her enormous talents to use by making educational bulletin boards that are visual feats throughout the school. Congratulations, Ms. Lubold. Metz Middle School, Sarah Wedeman. Osborne High School, Megan Snow. Ms. Snow is a science teacher at Osborne. She is an excellent leader at the school. Her classes are always engaged and interactive and her coworkers are often seeking her for advice and support. Her students love her passion and energy in the classroom and her dedication to their success. Ms. Snow is also the amazing leader of Osborne's winning academic team, leading them to regional championships and its academic show recordings. She serves as a teacher mentor and is a critical and dependable part of the Science Department and the school. Congratulations, Ms. Snow. Time for our Pear Award recipients. Starting out with Baldwin Elementary, Anna Tercios Vannegas. Jenny Dean Elementary School, Brittany Friend Lee. Hayden Elementary School, Kelly Anderson. Round Elementary School, Nancy Brino. Nancy Brino is the computer lab assistant and is a key member of the Round team as she does so many things that are behind the scenes but so important to the school's success. She provides sound instruction in the computer lab to develop computer literacy skills before students leave Round. She communicates with teachers to ensure her instruction in the lab also supports curriculum being taught in various content areas. Ms. Brino also coordinates the daily morning broadcast and leads the Class of the Week Program for all specialists. Ms. Brino's peers say she is a blessing because she is always willing to help her school any way she can. Congratulations, Ms. Brino. Weems Elementary School, Gloria Membrano. Ms. Membrano is a special education instructional assistant at Weems. She is happy to assist any student that needs her. She is quiet but firm and she makes students feel comfortable and they listen to her and follow her instructions. Her dedication and patience with all students is to be commended. She is such a valuable member of our staff. Congratulations, Ms. Membrano. Baldwin Intermediate School, Lauren Gardner. Lauren Gardner is a special education instructional assistant at Baldwin Intermediate. She is a phenomenal addition to our team, consistently going above and beyond to make sure all students are successful. She does not hesitate to step in when a colleague needs coverage or assistance. She is an excellent staff member and has already formed positive lasting relationships with all of Baldwin's students and their families. Congratulations, Ms. Gardner. Mayfield Intermediate School, Juana Batres. Metz Middle School, Regina Cabrera. Ms. Cabrera is a special education instructional assistant that gives 100% every day in class. She is thorough and well organized so a teacher never worries about where things are. She has good ideas to contribute to the classroom and is willing to learn new techniques and ways to help students. Most of all, Ms. Cabrera is patient and kind but firm and consistent. The students respond well to her and she makes a difference in our classrooms daily. Congratulations, Ms. Cabrera. Osborne High School, Erica Jones. The Osborne High School Social Studies Department has benefited greatly with the addition of Ms. Jones, who serves as a special education instructional assistant. Her professionalism and work ethic are much appreciated. She takes the initiative to do whatever it is she can do to make the class run smoothly and provide a positive learning environment for all students. She works tirelessly as a co-teacher in more than a dozen classrooms. She is always upbeat, willing to tackle any task, and engaged in the learning process. Congratulations, Ms. Jones. From Central Office and Maintenance, Jenny Higginbotham. Ms. Higginbotham has been a substitute specialist in human resources for almost three years. Her dedication to her job is admirable. She is constantly trying to improve what she does. This year, she has offered professional development opportunities for substitutes and put in place a recognition program, including the Subs for Subs luncheon. Hiring for substitutes is constant and Ms. Higginbotham interviews daily and conducts new substitute orientation every week. She serves a very important role within the school division and her service is greatly appreciated. Congratulations, Ms. Higginbotham. Ms. Salas is a special education bus attendant. She knows her students well and treats them just like family. She lets parents know which school's social events are coming up so they won't miss them. She is a positive role model for other bus attendants and assists them with questions that they might have about job-related tasks. Ms. Salas is a great attendant and a true asset to the transportation department. The Virginia School Board's Association has designated the month of February as School Board Clerk, Deputy Clerk Appreciation Month to acknowledge the role school board clerks play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and local schools. From preparation and management of board meetings, communicating the schedule of meetings to the public, and keeping the board organized and ready to conduct business, our clerks are to be commended for their hard work and dedication to the board and to our schools. Tonight, we celebrate Clerk of the Board Al Bagarza and Deputy Clerk of the Board
Since we didn't have a televised meeting next week, we wanted to be sure that we recognized you for your work and also to build awareness of the role that you, our school board clerks, have in assisting school board members, our superintendent, administrators, school staff, students, and our community. School board clerks are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities. School board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board. School board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and the superintendent. School board clerks, in the performance of their duties, are often required, often, to require to work extra hours and attend school board meetings. Ultimately, school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that the students achieve their highest potential. We're so fortunate to have dedicated, caring, and professional school board clerks who serve with honor and distinction. On behalf of the entire school board and the city of Manassas, we honor you with our appreciation and these small gifts. May you be proud of the work that you do, the people you are, and the difference you make. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of our recipients.
Well, thank you, Dr. Crum, for bringing up Al So Mowgli. You did a great job, I appreciate that. Next up is Board Committee Comments. There are no Board Committee Comments, I believe. I'm looking down the row. So we should move on next to School Board Comments, starting with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Wait a moment, actually. Okay, Mr. Anderson, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are having a wonderful day and congratulations to all the award winners. I have a few announcements to make in regards to the Eagle Writing Center at Osborne High School. Now you can connect with the Eagle Writing Center through Twitter at OHS underscore EWC. Tutors for the 2018-19 school year were inducted during Eagle Block last week. Each new tutor received a purple or gold balloon and an invitation to the Eagle Writing Center's Tutor Initiation Ceremony, a celebratory event scheduled to take place in the Eagle Writing Center tomorrow after school. Currently, the Eagle Writing Center has received over 50 applications. We are still accepting applications. Metz tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. is continuing until May. With the March Writing SOL rapidly approaching, the Eagle Writing Center has begun preparations, holding one-on-one tutoring sessions with students during the day. This concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Morales. Before we get to you, I noticed that one of our city council representatives is here, Ms. Sabeski. Thank you for being here. I know you appreciate me pointing that out, but, Mr. Morales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January 24th of 2018, I had the pleasure of chaperoning a foreign exchange student from China. I know other students as well had the chance to chaperon them, as well as some parents. I see Ms. Boaz had the opportunity to take care of two, host two Chinese students. So, he went by the name of Jingwei Jeranimo, or in my case, a great friend. And I greeted him with a great handshake and like a warm hug and I was like, and I brought American candy just so he could try it out, but obviously his friends ate most of it, so he never really got to try it. Well, he taught me multiple things of his culture, such as like language. One of his, my favorite Chinese quotes was "Wushu tsi bangdo," which means "I am the greatest." So, I like, you know, keeping that around with me. And it was great to get to know him for the four days I had with him. So, and also yesterday, Monday, the 12th, a group of students were able to meet with Lockheed Martin employees. Ethan and I were also informed of the opportunities available to continue our career in a computer-related field. And I would like to appreciate, thank actually, Susan McNamara and Paul Steiner, the CTE instructors of Osborne High School. So, thank you. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member comments. Mr. O'Handlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to everybody honored tonight, our National Merit Scholar, all our school counselors, our Apple and Pear Award winners, and our own Al Bagarza. Congratulations to Jenny Maholic, who this morning down at the Prince William County was recognized as one of our local heroes, received the Local Heroes Award. Jenny was recognized for her work with the Education Foundation, Osborne Band, and she was nominated by Project Mendeaus, where she's also a volunteer. And Project Mendeaus is one of our partners with some of our programs in the city. I was honored recently to also attend the first induction of students into the Osborne High School Governor's STEM Academy. Congratulations to those students. And again, as you just said, thank you to Mrs. McNamara and Mr. Steiner, who run that program and the principal and for everything you do at the high school for these kids. It's wonderful. And we had a wonderful evening at the Arts, attending the All-City Chorus Concert at the Hilton Center. It was an incredible presentation by the students and a special thank you to all the teachers and parents who make this possible. And I did see some of the teachers here earlier who were there, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess if you're not here tonight, you're at the basketball game. So, pardon me?
We're both.
Or both. So, good luck to our Osborne Eagles that are playing tonight. I'm sure Mr. DiMario will give a scoring update in his comments. Your school board is gearing up to recruit for new student representatives, so we're going to be going out to the history classes for our rising juniors and seniors, looking for new student representatives to replace Mr. Morales and Mr. Anderson since they will be graduating this year. So, applications will soon be available and we'll have more news out on that shortly. I did want to echo congratulations to all the inductees for the Governor's STEM Academy and also for the wonderful performance at the All-City Chorus Concert. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
I would also like to repeat what my former members have said. Congratulations to all the award winners, nominees. It's amazing to see what all of our students and teachers and counselors can do. On a note of counselors, I wanted to, this is not my quote, but it really meant something to me and I want it to mean something to you, everyone here who may be listening or watching. When someone's life slips or they don't know where to turn, school counselors give them the space for grace and dignity to rebuild their strength in their lives. And I just really, I really found that to be powerful and wanted to share that with everybody, so thank you, counselors. You do a lot. All the award winners tonight, I just want you to know that my children are in the school system and I always feel so confident when, knowing that they're going to Manassas City Public Schools because of all of the staff here. So, congratulations on your hard work. Basketball, wrestling, chorus, concert bands, everybody has had their districts, their regionals the past couple of weekends. My, Osborne High School sent nine wrestlers to regionals this year. We just did that last weekend. And this coming up weekend, we've got two going to states with four alternates, so I want to wish them luck and that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiMario.
Thank you, sir. We don't have to clap for us. For the boys, that's fine. The chorus concert that we attended, we graduated so many seniors last year, I was concerned about how they were going to do this year. And they're incredible. These kids and these teachers, it's absolutely unbelievable sitting up there listening to these kids. It really is, if you don't make it normally, make it next year. It really, it's just moving, how good they are, how well-trained they are. Congratulations to everybody that we honored tonight, especially our girls, Alba and Lee. I don't think until you're on the board or in Central Office, you realize the amount of time and work these people put in and the stuff they put up with seven board members. You know, and they have to look after all of us and get things ready for us. And especially, congratulations to Lee for training Alba, because I think you don't do a whole lot anymore, which is wonderful. Well, she doesn't have to because she trained Alba so well. So, I mean, you know, two or three meetings a year. So, I mean, you know, two or three meetings a year, and Alba, thank you very much for being as good as you are. We appreciate it very much. And basketball, wait a second. Did you get one, Coach?
Yeah, we're up five after three quarters.
We're up after five after three quarters. And we got a technical, but that's okay. The boys came in second in the district or the conference, are we conference now? And they're hosting the first game of that tournament tonight, so they had a very, they're having a very successful year, and they work real hard. Our girls didn't have quite a successful campaign. They've got one more game, they've won one. They weren't quite as deep as our boys are. But there were some games where they lost by a mountain of points, and with two minutes, one minute left, they're on the floor, going after balls. They are working so hard till the end of the game, no matter the score. Success isn't always measured in wins and losses. These girls, to me, are incredible, how hard they work, no matter the score. I'm very proud of them, and I hope they're able to turn it around next year for their own success in wins and losses, but they're winners. And if you see any of the girls that played, congratulate them on their effort this year, because it was really outstanding. I was very, very impressed with our girls. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Next, Vice Chair Emily Kiefer.
Thank you. I'll be quick, because everybody has highlighted so many great things already. I too wanted to congratulate everybody who's been honored tonight and should be honored throughout the year. I want to say too that everybody is working hard, that was both acknowledged tonight or those who aren't here tonight, and we really appreciate that. I have to say, after attending the Osborne Curriculum Fair and trying to get enrollment and things and decisions for my own daughter, I remember watching the freshman parents, which I was this last year, and just looking at their faces of being overwhelmed. And I have to tell you, those children that were there, the students, were salespeople, like there's no tomorrow about our programs. And the faculty, the teachers, I got personal counseling from a few of them, and I am so grateful, because I had no idea what to do. But I just wanted to say to the counselors, you're going to have a lot of parents coming your way, and I don't think people realize, you know, how difficult it is sometimes to navigate it, and how our counselors and our teachers and our community are there to support you. So, as hard as and as, you know, difficult as it can be sometimes to navigate the waters, it's nice to know that there are folks from the students all the way up to help navigate those. And I just wanted to say, to call out the counselors, because I know a lot of people will be asking questions. Alba and Lee, I can't personally thank you enough, especially for having to chase me down for something very important these last couple of weeks, and with tireless grace and patience, I thank you, I applaud you, and I will try to get my forms in on time for you. So, and I just wanted to say, I noticed in the audience, there's a lot of folks here who have, if not all of you, have had some part in sort of the budget presentation that will be going on. There's a ton of input, there's many months of work that go into this, so I just wanted to thank you both for your work, your commitment, and for being here tonight as we continue along with this process. So, thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I won't add on to the many great comments we had. I do want to say thank you to all the Apple and Pear Award winners, and to the students who are honored. We couldn't do what we do without everyone contributing, you know, there's a saying, it takes a village and it takes everyone, so we thank them all for their hard work, and we appreciate it. Also, to the clerks, you do an outstanding job, and what Mr. DiMario meant to say was that instead of doing three full-time jobs, she does two full-time jobs, or something like that about Ms. Miller. But thank you for your work, and Ms. Garza for working tirelessly. You make us, you know, kind of look okay, because you work hard, and we try to make you proud of us. So, thank you both, we appreciate your help and your time. Next up is citizens' comments, and we have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who has not signed up who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to quickly move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiMario, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries 6-0. Next up, discussion agenda, new business, the superintendent's FY 2018-2019 proposed budget.
Kiefer, and school board members. Tonight is a very special night, in that it's my last presentation to the school board for a budget. Now, there's a good part to that, and there's also a hard part to that. This has, being a superintendent in this school system is unbelievable when you think about the work that the employees do. My cabinet, the principals, teachers, there's been a lot of work. Ms. Kiefer, you're right, there was a lot of work in this year's budget, and I look forward to tonight talking about that work, the research that's been done, and where we landed. But before I get started, there's a person in on the cabinet that speaks the best about the dollars, and so I want to turn this over at this time to Mr. Hawkins.
On your screen, you'll be able to see the topics that we're going to talk about tonight. I'll probably take care of the first two or three bullets, and Dr. McGork will finish up with the last two bullets. First thing we want to talk about is our state revenue. You can see that our state revenue is going up about 1.82%. This is important to us, and the fact, there's two very important aspects about this. One is that in our five-year forecast that we present to the school board periodically, we assume that we're going to have, or we project that we're going to have, a 2% growth in revenue. Now, the only, the revenue numbers that we have are coming from the governor, and the governor, and the General Assembly is still in session, and we're hopeful that things could get better, but they also could get worse. So, we don't know where we stand right now with the General Assembly. But one of the things that we do know about the governor's budget is that there are no salary increases whatsoever in the budget for teachers or support staff or anyone else. So, that is a major thing that we hope that the General Assembly will correct when they bring forward their adopted budget. So, I know this screen looks busy, but it's not as hard as it looks. So, if you go back and you think about, how does the General Assembly, how have governors in the past supported public education? The red lines across show the actual revenue that's given to school divisions on average throughout the state. So, right, if you look at, from left to right, in 2005, we were receiving $4,084 per student on average for all school divisions across the state. Today, or even through 2020, through the end of the next biennium, the state contribution, based on the governor's budget, is $4,168 per student. So, you can see that we are really just, we haven't really changed in the amount of funding to K-12 education from the state during that period of time. So, the blue lines represent what would happen, what would have happened, or how much the contribution would be if the state had just only kept up with the rate of inflation, based on the Consumer Price Index, based in $2,005. They had done nothing else but that, not added anything for pay raises or anything else, just kept up with the rate of inflation, the contribution on a per-student basis would not be at 4,168, like it is now, would be at 5,665. Quite a bit of difference when you take that number and multiply it times our enrollment. So, how does it look for Manassas City? So, again, we've got all of our funding sources. The orange line is the state revenue. You can see our state revenue picture seems to be going up better, or is better than what the state average is. The reason for that is not anything that, the state is not just showering us with money or giving us additional funding for any reason. Our state revenue has gone up simply because Manassas City's property values, their sales, their other things in relation to other jurisdictions throughout the state is worse than what they are relatively speaking statewide. Those numbers will change when the next biennium budget comes back. We'll see our composite index go up, and our revenue will be going down from the state. But as we are through 2018 budget, our state revenue has been increasing each year in excess of what the average state of K-12 institution throughout the state is. It's also important to also look at the blue line, which is the city contribution. On a per-student basis, the city contribution is approximately the same amount of money as it was, or it's actually less than what it was in 2006. So, if our enrollment has gone up from 7,000, I mean, from 65, 75, you said in the left corner, to 7,771, but we're still being paid, or our contribution from the city is still being, is what it was, on a per-student basis, what it was in 2006. So, just one moment, think about all of the, all of the pay raises, all the health insurance increases, all the utility increases, everything that's happened through us since 2006. So, when you say that we're, when people say that you have to do more with less, we're doing a lot more with the same amount. So, let's just look at the city contribution again in a different way. So, if we were to go with the city back in 2006, they were giving us 62, 65 per student. If they had kept up with just the rate of inflation during that period of time, we would be getting $7,759 per student instead of 62, 17. Okay? So, how much is that really? How much, how much money is that? Well, that's about 11.9 million more dollars. Just think what we would be able to do with our staff, with the programs that we offer in our schools. How much better would this school division be today if we had received 11.9 million more dollars than what we currently have? So, when you look at our student population, we have almost two-thirds of our population are Hispanic. You can see the other demographics there with white, African-American, and all others. Our current enrollment is September 30th, or our enrollment on September 30th was 77, 71. We'll give you a breakdown of the enrollment over the years. You can see that our total enrollment has gone up about 18% in the last decade or so, but you can see how much growth we've had at each level throughout the years and overall. This chart sort of documents the same thing that we had on the chart, except that, one of the things that I like about this chart is it shows that our growth is steady but not overwhelming. One of the, if it's anything worse for a school division than losing student enrollment, it's gaining it too fast. And you can see that by some of our neighbors like Loudoun County, who are having a hard time keeping up with the capital expenditures for, because the enrollment is increasing so much. Our enrollment is increasing at a good, steady pace that we can keep up with financially. So, what does that growth look like going forward? So, you'll see in 2015, between 2015 and 16, we grew at about a 1.3% rate. Between 2016 and 17, we grew at about 1.2%. But we're expecting between 2017 and 2018 for our enrollment to increase by approximately 2.3%. And then going forward, in FY from 17 to 18, well, between 18 and 19, you'll see a big jump, where we'll be going up, where we're projected to go up 5.96%. So, we believe that our enrollment is going to start kicking up. The projections were given to us by our consultants, and that was done, I think about a year or so ago by Citygate GIS. So, if we look at our demographic change, we've experienced a 57% decline in the number of our white students. Our Hispanic population has increased by 121%. Our African-American enrollment has declined by 18%, while our all others, all other races and cultures have increased by 112% during that time. So, this shows you that our, that our school population is becoming more and more diverse. With that, we also have other budget pressures. You can see where our free and reduced lunch percentage is growing, almost at a 45-degree angle. We think that, we are predicting that by the start of school year next year, that two-thirds of our population will be economically disadvantaged. Our special ed population has decreased over the years. It was, I think, when I first got here, 14 or 15%. Now, it's down to 12, but our ESOL population is, continues to be significant in this division at 50%. So, this pie chart shows how the money is split up. About 84% of all of our, all of our funds has been on salary and benefits. So, we're a labor-intensive organization. We're not atypical from any other school division throughout the state. So, you can see the breakdown of how the money is actually spent. So, this gives you another idea of how it's spent, and this chart is helpful in some ways, but it's also misleading in other ways. You see, we have about, almost 80% of our funds is on what we call school-based cost. But please understand that the 4.9 million in technology and student achievement and all these other groups fully support the school, the schools. That's where that money is spent. It's not spent at the central office, it's spent in the school population to support all of our schools. So, while almost 80% of it is directly tied to school-based cost, these other departments also support our schools. So, when you look at the, this chart, you need to start from the right and go to the left, instead of going left to right. So, all of our funds that we're going to receive, based on the city funds that we're going to receive is based on our funding agreement that we have with the city. This is the last year, this is the last budget under the current funding agreement, and I know that the finance committees from the school board and the city council are going to be getting together soon to develop another funding formula going forward. So, if you look at the city funds, we're going to get a little over $57 million from the city. The Capital Projects Fund is at $3 million for FY '19. In the current year, the budget we're living in now, in FY '18, the Capital Projects Fund is at 3.4 million. So, there's a change there. Our debt service is approximately 6.3 million, and our debt service is the amount of money that we are paying back for bonds, is principal and interest for bonds that we, funds that we have borrowed throughout the years. That number of 6.3 million dollars is approximately a million dollars less than what it was in the current year that we're in now, in FY '18. So, our total operating fund is 108,574,000. So, remember that column, the next page, we're starting off to the right again, you'll see that our operating, our total operating fund's 108,574,436. Out of that money comes the Food Service Fund, where all of our food service workers are done. That's, we receive a small amount from the state, we receive about $3 million from the federal government, and that $3 million is the free of federal government, and that $3 million is the free and reduced lunch meals. And the other funding sources for the food service fund are actually cash sales for meals in the schools. If you, the federal grant money is approximately $3.5 million. And we are, we do have some current concerns going forward in FY 19 about the stability of the federal grant monies that we will receive. But we don't know anything for sure now. I mean, I can't remember when the last time the federal government actually passed a budget. So we, this is always a period of time where we're just concerned about the federal grant funds and we just don't know where they'll be going forward. The operating fund is $100,828,000. That's where all of our funding for all of our teacher salaries, all of our support staff, all of that, all of our maintenance, transportation, all of that comes out of that $100,828,000. Our capital improvement plan for FY 19 is, like I said before, is $3 million. Out of that $3 million, we will have some division-wide initiatives. A portion of that is for technology upgrades. That, those technology upgrades are for infrastructure upgrades, like servers and bandwidth and that are not computers for students or staff or anyone else. Those are infrastructure upgrade funds. We have money in there for school bus replacements to keep us on schedule with the recommendation from the Virginia Department of Education. I think the replacement cycle is, I always get messed up, it's either 15 or 16 years. And we, this board has made a concerted effort over the years to make sure that our bus fleet stays up to date. We have set aside $120,000 for bus additions if we, to the fleet if we need it due to enrollment growth or ridership growth. Just to give you a frame of reference, a normal, a regular school bus costs approximately $100,000 each. So we're talking about, what, six or seven school buses up there. So not that many. Another exciting thing that we're getting ready to do is start on our next school. And so this year, we will, assuming this budget is adopted, we will be undertaking a home and architectural engineering firm to design the new Dean Intermediate School. We're very excited about this prospect and so we'll begin the process this year. Also with Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate Schools, Baldwin was designed for elementary and intermediate school children. So we may have to go back and do some redesign if we're going to put 300 pre-K students in Baldwin, as is the plan, as is envisioned right now. We may have to go back and do some redesign work at Baldwin to accommodate that many pre-K students. So that's the plan for, the capital improvement plan as proposed for FY 19. And we'll turn it back over to Dr. McGore.
You hit the right one. I know, I get a little bit confused. So what do these final numbers mean? I can listen to Andy talk all the time because he, that's what he does. Every single day of the year, he is always in the numbers. And we can all call upon him whenever we need to, and he can tell us what the numbers mean, you know, how we need to plan. But there's a story behind this budget. And the story is about where we started and where we ended. The story is about people that come to work every day, working very, very hard, looking at beautiful faces that will soon be start, at the high school level, soon be starting their years and as young adults making a living, to pre-K students that look at you with a face and you get onto them and they look at you and tell you they love you. You know, it's a span of time and we have people that report to work every day that teach our children, cook for our children, clean after our children, fix the boo-boos, all those kinds of things. And sometimes I feel like those are, those are the hidden people that work because what happens at the state and federal level is test scores. And that sometimes becomes our focus. And this year, I think it really started last year with our budget and with the whole process that we did with the teacher engagement survey, and I want to talk about that. So we started out with all of the schools at Level 1 presenting their budget. And $110 million, that's where we were. Then Andy has his cardiac arrest over here and he's going, the blood pressure goes up and we start talking. In that $110 million was some duplication. See, that's the part of the zero-based budget. Everybody sits down and then they find out, well, I did that and I did that. And if it's technology and Bobby Barrett did it, the principals really, they're glad to give that to Bobby because that clears it off their table. So in that 110, we did find a little bit of duplication. But what was presented, the school, then the departments and the schools meet together and they start the cutting. And it comes to me at that point. And I really watched a lot of the work going on. Some of it I didn't get to see because I'm not invited to. But they presented me with $100,828,541. And with that, I said, where did, how did we get from 110 to 100 million? And they said, this way. And, you know, so often you hear, when you cut the budget, you're cutting the budget and you're cutting into the bone and the bone marrow and everything else. I would have to say that, given what we're allocated from the state, from the federal government and from the city, our staff does a very, very good job. And this year's budget, as we talk about, talk, is going to be about the people. And a lot of these things on this budget, as you'll notice on this first page, these were not funded and they were new budget requests. These are people that are needed, but we can always, but as our staff and what we do every day, we find a way to make it all work. So if you look at non-personnel, and I will, I have to say too, if you'll look at the list, it's not just people, this is not people in schools. This is people, this is people that, at the central office level and out in our schools. This was a, this was teamwork. So when you look at the non-personnel, personnel, non-funded, you've got a bucket truck on there. So, you know, we looked at every single thing. Osborne High School, graphing calculators. They got some calculators, but the total number of calculators that they wanted, it was partially funded. So then there's program support. These are still budget requests for this year. So if you look at that, we were able to partially fund some areas. So what the partially funded means is that they will receive the same amount of money as they did last year. There were desires to increase that funding, to do some other things, but what we will be doing is working where we exist right now. That's what happens when you look at a budget. The employee, the employee referral program, I want to talk a little bit about that later on as well as right now. You know that we're always looking for teachers. And I always have this thing, if you tell a teacher, it's going to get out there. And what I want to tell our teachers, if this budget is approved by the board, is that we want to work on an employee referral program. And there's no better person to hire than somebody that's been referred by someone in our own school system. Because our school, our teachers know what it takes to be a teacher in our school system. And if they refer someone to us, it has to be somebody that knows those common things about that person. Well, there will be a $500 referral fee paid to teachers the following school year. And that's why that says the program cost is expensed in 2020. We hire them, the person works all year, and the person stays because remember, it's about retention too. So when that person stays, the bonuses will be paid in the September check. I'm excited about this. This is something that came out of the budget process. Not my idea, but it came out through that, the whole process where teachers and administrators and central office staff worked together. So I think I've explained everything so that, and then explain, everything else is, the homebound hourly rate increase, that was something that we looked at to try to match what's in our market. But right now, it's going to stay as it currently is. We're not doing away with homebound. Okay, so the next area was the previous budget requests. This, these three items have been on our budget, in our budget, since probably the second year of my position as superintendent. Years ago, when the money got tight, we went to four tiers because we were growing, it's what Andy talked about. Sometimes when you grow real fast, there's growing pains. Well, the growing pain hit us pretty quick and we needed to add buses and drivers. We've never been able to add that back. We have a, you know, we have a five-tier bus system. We make it work. Our kids get to school and back safely and we've kept our buses updated. You know, when I ride around Virginia and I look at some of the buses on the road, I feel safe for our kids because we follow the guidelines of the state. The computer, the technology, computer science classrooms, right now in our labs, we have instructional assistants. What we would like to do, we have advanced so much in the way we offer our technology. We would like to put classroom teachers in every one of our labs where they work all day long, expanding the computer science knowledge of our students. Our instructional assistants do a fantastic job. But if we were to hire a teacher, that's a whole different request level of what we teach in the classroom. Then we have unfilled FTE reductions. I want to say this loud and clear, look at the word unfilled. These are positions that we have not filled this year. And looking at the numbers of students, I met with Osborne, with some, the salary and benefits committee today, and I asked the round and Osborne High School representatives to share that. None of these positions have a teacher in them at this time. They are vacant. But we also know that we won't need them next year. And so these positions have been recommended to be cut. So that comes to $8.5 million. These are things that our principals and central office department heads requested and we said, we're going to wait. Now, we will continue to run our school system and we will continue to do a good job. It just means, like we always do, there's going, people wear two and three hats at a time. That's what we do. And that's why it's so important for us to talk about what we do with our staff. So this budget is about students and their teachers. Last year, it took us two years to set up the salary scale and to put all of our support staff on scale at the right step. And so the teachers waited patiently. And this year, I have to say, it's about our students and teachers because what we do regarding to teachers is what happens for our students. This budget is about teachers and students. The school board adopted a new strategic plan and two goals that under plan everything else, say, increase student achievement, optimize their academic performance and student success. This means all decisions must focus on students' needs and learning to ensure children are provided with opportunities to excel and are prepared for their adult lives. A second goal is attract, develop, and retain highly effective instructional and support staff. In other words, we need to culture, cultivate a culture of excellence and service. Last year, we conducted our first employment engagement survey. And the survey showed employees were engaged in all areas except for our certified staff. Teachers said they wanted to be heard, they wanted their voices to be heard, they wanted professional learning opportunities that they could choose. They wanted, they talked about culture and climate. And beyond the survey, they also talked about salaries and benefits. The board asked that the following committees be established, a culture and climate committee, a professional learning committee, and a salary and benefits committee. Since the results of the employment, the employee engagement survey were shared, I've continued to think about what our teachers said and I've read everything I could get my hands on to discover what we can do. It's a national problem and there's a lot of research coming out daily. Our teachers aren't wrong. There is a problem. And it doesn't just belong to this division. It belongs to the state, it belongs to the national government, it belongs to all of the communities across this nation. There is a lot that I could talk about with this. But tonight, I'm going to talk about the work of the salary and benefits committee and what they identified and what they researched. And I want to thank this committed group of people who put their heart and souls into the work. And they were so humble in their work. And they kept saying, remember to say, this was not our recommendation, this was our findings. They were so professional in their work. So their top issues that they identified and researched was that, right out of the hopper, they discovered that the MCPS teacher salary was not commensurate with Prince William County schools. Now, there's a lot of times when they tell me Prince William County schools and I'll say, well, it's bigger. The size of the school system does not have anything to do between the classrooms because they teach kids. And our teachers are blessed with the fact that our classroom, our class sizes have not gotten out of control. But there were some things, in order to keep our classroom sizes smaller and easier to teach in, that things disappeared when the recession was taking place. One was the loss of the 403B match. There was a, right as I got here, the retiree benefit for insurance, we had to, that disappeared. They also, they also talked about increasing health insurance costs for the employees in the division. And we have zero control over that, just as the average homeowner doesn't have control. You get a bill in the mail every year and it says your house insurance goes up or your car insurance goes up. So, but it affects salaries when salaries are not, when you don't have cost of living raises. So insurance keeps going up and even though you get a step increase, it doesn't amount for much because everything else is stepping in and taking that, those extra dollars. So there was another thing that they brought up when you're talking about the teacher salary match. And that is, teachers have to pay their bills. So we were beginning to lose teachers to counties, a specific county that they don't have to drive very far to before Step 15. And actually, it comes before Step 12 because in Prince William, you, they cap it at 12, we cap it at 15. But the biggest part is, there's a huge cost when we train teachers and teachers leave us in their fourth or fifth year. We're, it's, you know, it's something that we even hear from our police department. They do an excellent job training them and then they leave and go to Prince William and Fairfax. So our teachers, our teachers knew what they, what they, what they looked at and what they talked about was real. So here's an example. The blue line is Prince William salaries, the red lines are our salaries. And there is a gap. The highest discrepancy, there's a discrepancy between .87% and 13.8%. I'm reading the things that they talked about with me and they also presented to our school board in a work session. MCS steps on average are 7.3% lower than Prince William County schools. The salaries were only higher on six out of 150 steps. 96% of them, Manassas City Public School salary steps are lower than Prince William County schools. And we're not talking a little bit lower. And we're not talking a little bit lower, it's a large gap. Based on the data analysis conducted by the committee so that they could stop losing quality teachers to neighboring districts, primarily Prince William, they, they felt, and I have to say, I agree, that a competitive salary scale is a great, a huge competitor. In education, the most important relationship we have in the school division is between the teacher and student. And we want to attract the best possible teachers in the Northern Virginia area and keep them satisfied and committed to Manassas City Public Schools. So as they worked, one of the big goals was, they said, they want to be commiserate. They do the same kind of work, they work very hard, they put the same hours in, we have the same committees, we have the same sports, they're working the same way. So there's a cost to that and immediately, as they worked, they told central office department heads information they wanted and we provided the information. So this, this cost was provided through Mr. Hawkins and his department. So right off the bat, $4 million. Now remember, we talked about $8 million. So in that 110 million was a salary increase, a $4 million salary increase. So I've been doing lots of reading and I've been thinking about, and I don't give up very much about thinking, I, I overthink sometimes. I'm not overthinking this. Teacher retention is the most important thing that we can do for our students. Our doors need to be open for people to come in and they close and people stay. What you see in front of you, and there's research everywhere, this is happening all across the United States. Teachers are taught, Katie Keegan is in a national conference for professional learning right now and she texted today and said, "Everybody's talking about salary, school climate, autonomy, and leadership." Well, hello, this is what the research is showing. Our teachers told us that. That it made me, really when I saw this, I thought, hey, that engagement survey that we use, it's valid. Our teachers are talking to us. And look at there, salary is number one, the blue for teachers who remain. Salary is number one when teachers make that decision to leave. Autonomy, school climate, that was the big thing, the board, and we're working on that this year. School climate is important both ways equally. Autonomy, you know, I think teachers understand, we want, we want to give them autonomy, but then we also, all of us are accountable to the state and federal. You know, they're, when, once the general assembly starts meeting, more laws come down that we have to march to and follow. So you can tell that for them to remain, they want, they want autonomy, but when they leave, that's one of the things that they can, they can live with. Leadership, huge. That's one of the things that we talked about on the engagement survey. They feel comfortable talking to their leaders, their leaders listen to their voices. This is to retain teachers. Then there's the teacher shortage. It's not new, the general assembly is talking about this, including our new secretary of education, the deputy secretary of education. I was on, at a superintendent's meeting and she was on a phone call with us and we were talking about these issues. The shortages mirror what, what our shortages are. We don't have industrial arts anymore. I guess this is a national survey and in some areas, they're still, they must still have industrial arts. But if you look at the top, career technical education, yep, that's one of our shortage areas. And you know, one of the biggest reasons is that when we want to hire someone like in, in construction or someone to work in cybersecurity, we're going to have to part-time work then because out in the, out in the, what we call the business world, their salaries, you know, we can't match that. So if we can get a portion of their time, that in and of itself is wonderful. And then hiring, what should districts do differently to find and hire? High-quality K-12 teachers, improve pay and benefits. We've been working on the benefits for about a year and a half and I'm really happy of the, with the things that we continue to hear from, through ideas from our staff and through our human resource department. So what does it look like with us? What does that data tell us? Well, I will tell you that it's better this year than last year. This year, we only have 10 positions that we have not hired that are being covered by long-term substitutes. And that's, that's as of January 1st. Also, I want to, to say that we have 28 teachers that are provisionally certified. And I don't know about you, I know these people have to be working very hard in the classroom, but we owe it to our students to have, to have teachers that are, that are highly certified, the ones that are fully certified, not provisionally certified. So what does my proposed funding part of the budget talk about? So you saw the $8 million. First and foremost, we have to optimize academic performance and student success from pre-K through grade 12 through the continuation of current programs and services. There, we do not need to raise class sizes. Some of the things that the benefits and salary and benefits committee brought to us, I'll have to leave to the next superintendent and school board to work through those things. I think we can reach that. It might, it's going to take time, but I think the most important thing right now is that we need to be competitive and we need to honor the people that work hard for us every single day and show them that we value them. In our strategic plan, it says attracts and retains highly effective instructional teaching staff. And we, one of the ways that we do that is by matching the local market, which is an average of 5.6%. And what that means is I'm requesting that the school board accept my proposal that, that we match Prince William salary scale as well as give our teachers the step increase. We never, and I've got to commend Manassas City Public Schools. I think that we're behind two or three steps. I'm, I'm, I'm not really quite sure, but even when things really got rough, we looked at the 403B, we looked at the insurance, but we did, we have done our best to stay on step so that this cost of living raise shows our teachers that we continue to, to do what we know, we've always done in the past and that we're going to honor them so that as they work, they, they can pay their bills and they can know that, that the work they, they do for us is appreciated. There is a step increase that I'm also placed in this budget for support staff and, and the, this is something that I've always, that's in every budget as well, for all administrators, a 2% of midpoint. So this is my budget that I respectfully present to our school board, to the school board. And I have to say that I've just been so totally honored to watch my staff work. You will now see the, the dates of the upcoming meetings. I can't believe I'm doing this. It's my last one.
You're on the private session.
But I just want to say that the work has just begun and the, the salary and benefits committee knows that just because I stood up here and said a whole lot of words, that I mean an awful lot, your work is going to be just as difficult. And we stand prepared to provide you with whatever you need as you work to that magic date of April 10th, when you approve the school budget. I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGorick. And before I go on, I mean, this is your last budget, so I know it's kind of emotional, but we appreciate the hard work, the diligence and the passion you have for our students and our staff. And then Mr. Hawkins, I, we work with him diligently and thank you for your insights because they really help inform us and help us look at the top, total picture. So thank you for, for the work you've done. And the entire staff, I know it's all of them, the committee that presented tested an outstanding job. I see Mr. Scholz back there and I forgot who I was presenting with you that evening.
You can ask them to stand up.
And actually, the entire committee, could you all please stand up while, while on camera so we can see the folks in that committee? Thank you. We, you know, people often say, you know, we appreciate what you've done, but we truly do and we listened to what you said because we all up here know the hard work that you do and know the insight that you provided and it was thoughtful, so it was very, very helpful. As you can see up here, we have many budget work sessions, we'll be discussing the budget more in depth if you have further comments. We obviously appreciate them, the public hearings March 13th. And before we move on to the agenda, I'm going to open up to board members who may want to comment just generally on the budget process and I'll start with Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you. As long as Mr. Albrecht's not here, I'll try and, I won't use the big words he does. Thank you, Dr. McGorick and all you guys. We appreciate it. I just want to make some things clear here. This is the superintendent's proposed budget. It is not the budget. The budget will come from the school board. The school board may or may not make changes to this. Chances are, there won't be great changes, but there may be, once the funds are, we have a better idea of what kind of funds we're going to get. So I just don't want anybody to think that this is a done deal because it's not. We're going to work to make it a done deal, but nothing's cut, set in stone yet. I have, and of the $10 million that is not funded, which we would like to fund, don't hold your breath, but we'd like to fund that, those positions on there are not real people right now. Everybody's got to know, I don't want to get the wrong idea out there that we're riffing anybody or cutting any people. These are positions that are not filled, that have been requested, but are not there anyway. So nobody in, as far as I can see, again, nothing's set in stone, there are no riffs. So don't look at that $10 million like people are going to lose their jobs because they're not going to. And we just hope that we can get more money from the state, if they will do that, and maybe from the city as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to thank everybody involved in this process. It was wonderful. It's great to see the potential for a substantial raise. It looks like an average of, what, 7.6% if everything goes as presented, correct? Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, is that? Okay. Is Mr. Hawkins?
Okay.
For teachers. You can go ahead, please. Thank you.
I mean, concentration this, this year has been on getting our teacher salaries in line. So that, you're, you're correct as far as the teachers are concerned, but for the support staff and for the administrative staff, it'd be a 2%, be a step increase only for support staff and 2% on mid, on mid-grade for administrative staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? And one, one thing I'll, I'll comment before we move on, I say frequently is that in order to reach the best decisions, I think I can speak for the board in saying that we firmly believe we need all input. Folks complain, folks talk, and folks say things, but oftentimes we don't hear from them. We can't make the best collective decision unless we have input from everybody. So the folks who are at home on TV watching, watching this on, you know, you know, their computer screens late at night, folks who are bored, I guess, no. But seriously, folks in the community who really care about this community, we need all input because in order to get to the best resolution, we need everyone's support. So please, thoughtfully look at this, any input you have is appreciated and we'll do our best to do the best we can with what we have. So thank you again for your presentation. We appreciate it. Mr. Di Maria?
Can I?
Oh, please.
Manny hit a three-pointer from the corner and Osborne won tonight. And Battlefield beat Patriot at Patriot tonight. Patriots' first home loss, I think, is that right, Coach? And so Friday night, I imagine it'll be 7 o'clock. Osborne is going to host for the tournament championship, we're going to host Battlefield. So Friday night, nothing else going on, be there.
Thank you for that update.
I appreciate that.
And thank you all who are here tonight for the support of our budget votes and everything we've done here, we appreciate it. On the agenda, I'll give you all a second to clear out, those of you who are clearing out.
All right, as you folks are clearing out, we'd appreciate a little.
Quiet, as we can move on to the agenda. Thank you.
He said nicely.
Yeah, I'm trying to be nice. Action agenda, finance and operations to revise FY 2017, 2018 CIP.
So, good evening again. If we, the school board has adopted already 2017 and 2018 CIPs, capital improvement plans, but we have made, over the, over the course of this time, we've made some, some changes to it. And so I want to flip down to this part of, of the document. You can see that during the January 23rd school board meeting, the school board approved entering into an energy performance contract and the buy-down was $1,786,000 roughly dollars. So what we're, what we're doing is, is that we, we moved, if you see here at Round Elementary, we have $2 million. We've actually taken that money from Round, placing 1.786 million in energy performance contract, joining with our city partners for a contribution of $159,000 for tennis court replacement at Osborne this summer. And also, we've already spent $55,000 at Round on the HVAC design replacement. So we're, we're making those, proposing, we've already made those changes. I mean, the board has agreed to the energy performance contract part of it. The, the other part, as far as 18 is concerned, you'll notice that in FY 18, over here, we have 1.1 million, $1,900, $190,000 for HVAC at Osborne. Well, that project is part of the energy performance contract. So that freed up those funds in that line item and we're proposing that we spend $90,000 of that money to, to replace our SRO vehicles in the, in the city. We are also having gym locker replacement at Osborne, maker space renovation at Osborne, cosmetology upgrades, all at Osborne, hallway floor replacement at Metz. And those, that, so we're just reallocating those funds. So we're here tonight asking for approval to make these changes so that we can get moving. We need to, we need to start moving to get these projects underway if we're going to be prepared for the start of school next year. We've got a lot of work to do, especially in the, in the maker space and the cosmetology areas and it, of course, in the flooring at Metz as well, but we have a lot of work to do in a short time to get there. So we, that's the reason why we have that request tonight, to ask that we have these items approved so that we can begin to be successful for the new school year.
All right, thank you. Make some talk, if you have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the city, the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the revised FY 2017, 2018 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Di Maria, seconded by Vice Chairman Kiefer, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the revised FY 2017, 2018 capital improvement plan, CIP. Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Well, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The ayes have it 6-0.
We've seen it a thousand times.
Yes, we have and I should, I should add that we have seen it a thousand times, so we're not just voting, you know, willy-nilly, so to speak. All right. Well, I believe that's all that's on our agenda for this evening. May I have another motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Di Maria to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it 6-0. The meeting is adjourned, 8:30.
Thank you, sir.